Danielle.
Keep calling.
Hey, did you put your basket with your questions? Your basket for your questions? Oh, okay.
Is everything going well with you? Huh? Everything going well with you? What I called in a virus was?
Is it on?
Yes.
Guys, excuse me, I hate seeing a rub, but we're gonna go ahead and get started if you will. Take a. Sorry, Lord. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Hello. Hi. Um, welcome to a raw and relevant part two. Um, we're gonna go ahead and get started. And before we dive right into everything, I'm gonna ask Pastor Robbie if he will lead us in prayer. So if you will all please stand.
Absolutely. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for this blessed day. And I thank you for this opportunity that we have to meet together in this place. Lord, I thank you for bringing us together like this. Lord, I thank you for Danielle and so many others in our community who have a heart to have these conversations. Lord, thank you for each one that's here. And Lord, I pray that you would bless our time together tonight. I pray that you would guide every question asked and every answer given, every word spoken and every, even every thought, Lord, I pray that you guide every aspect of this evening. And let it be according to your will. Let it be pleasing to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Before I continue, I want to remind everyone that there is water outside. Stephanie Mayfield with the Tobacco Coalition is outside and she's passing out waters. Before we dive right into everything, our first speaker is Mr. Steve Chambers. If y'all recall from the last meeting, Mr. Chambers like really brought the house down. So he's back by popular demand. So we're gonna ask Mr. Chambers to come in his way and he has 10 minutes. Not 10:01, but 10 minutes to tell us what we need to hear regarding what we're going through and experience today. So, Mr. Chambers.
Good evening. It's a blessing for me to be here. To the organizers of this event, pastor this great church, Miss Danielle and Pastor Swell. We're thankful to be able to come and speak about something that might be pertinent to some and not interesting to others. I started to talk, I think it was about a, about a month and a half ago. She told me to start where I left off at. I'm an old man. I can't remember where I left off at. I don't even know what I was talking about. Thank you, Danielle. But before I get to that, I wanna share something else with you, if you don't mind. I was watching TV this past Tuesday evening, the news. And it brought back a remembrance to me on something that actually occurred right here in Stone County. I think the young men, a group of black young men, who had won a state championship in a place called, I think it was Perry, Georgia. Anybody see that? They were never recognized for their accomplishment. I think that was the last year that those young men was at that school before integration took place. And somehow or another, they kept pushing and pushing and pushing. This happened back in 1969. And finally, a few days ago, they recognized those gentlemen by giving them their rings after 50 years. I am in a similar situation. When I graduated from Jackson State in 1970, they started riot up there. Some of you probably, you're too young to know about it. It became nationwide news. They sent the students home like they did during the time of this virus, when they dismissed school and sent kids home. I never did get a chance to march, even though I paid all of my money. About three months ago, they said the class of 1970 would get a chance to march with the class of 2020. I sent additional money in. I received a letter the other day saying, "Don't come, don't worry about it. You have three options what to do with your money." Only thing I'm really interested in from there, that I love the school, is for them to send me my Golan diploma and my Golan certificate. I just wanna share that with you. The reason I mentioned about the school in Perry, Georgia, when we left Locker High School, which was the prominent predominant black school over here, became Stone Miller School. And it saddens me to go back to that school right now. And I'm gonna tell you why. I mentioned this earlier, when I had to address the junior high students and kind of black history program they had over there. The reason, uh, my sadness is every time I walked down that hallway, they destroyed all of the trophies, ribbons, letters of accolade, and medals that the black students at Locker High School had contributed. That hallway was full of medals and trophies. I don't know who the superintendent was or the Board of Education was. But every time they have the Stone Lock reunion here in Stone County, people come from California, from all over the nation for this reunion. And the first thing they asked about and wanna show their grandkids, where's that trophy that I helped put over there? They took all of the trophies, ribbons, certificates, and medals, to my understanding, and took those devices, those instruments, to the city of the county dump and destroyed them. It's so sad. And one of the things that the people at the Stone Lock reunion want to do is to walk their campus one more time to show their grandkids and their kids their contribution. It's no longer there. I have searched high and low looking for those medals, those trophies. And the reason I mentioned about the championship, because the 1963 Locker High School was on the same thing. They won the championship. The largest trophy that, at that school, was the championship trophy that those boys placed there. I remember, y'all remember Mr. Bobby Watts? Anybody know him? Mr. Bobby Watts used to drive a blue Jeep everywhere he went. Over there behind Stone Middle School, where they have the residence, they have homes over there now. There was a line of tumbler trees there. Whenever Stone, whenever Locker High played a ballgame, you would see Mr. Watts drive their Jeep across that field at every home game we had. Not only Mr. Watts, but several outstanding citizens, white citizens here from Stone County would come and watch the Locker High students play football. It wasn't so much as throwing and pulling down. When those boys hit you, they were hit. I can name several of them. And I do believe this, if Stone County was getting the recognition now that it gets then, that it's getting now, several old guys would be, would have been retired from the pro. They were outstanding young men. Big physical young men. One of the daily routines for training during the summer was to run from Locker High School down by the old dump by Mr. Miller's plant, further down, close to where I appear there, and run back. They were in top-notch physical shape. I mention that to say this. It is time for Stone County as a people to come more structured and show more love towards each other. If you're black or white, doesn't make any difference. If you are Christians, and I'm sure you're sitting up in God's house professing this, we have to show more love towards each other. It's time out for the separation and bigotry, prejudices, racism. Everybody, idiot, have some form of prejudice within them. If you hate apple pie, love lemon, you have something. During the time when I was coming up in Stone County, I ran one out of seven children. I had to earn my weight. At one particular time, my father had three students attending Jackson State University at the same time. We were a poor family, not poor, po. We had enough to eat. Rags had patches on them, but we were comfortable. Your grandfather, Big John Galloway, is the one that would hire us at the pickle plant during the summers to make money. Because he knew, Mr. Galloway and my father were good friends. If I made $150 that week, if, my mother got $130, I got 20. While I had the 20, Mr. Buffkins had a store over here. I had my own account with Mr. Buffkins, paying one or $2 a week for a pair of jeans, a pair of shoes, whatever I needed. We do not structure our students that way anymore. We give them everything that they want. When we were coming up, we had to work. Tungnuts, accounts, clean off roof, push a lawnmower to town, the most somebody's yard. And in that process, people spat on me. I was hit with rocks. As, acted as if they wanted to run over me. And the only thing I was trying to do was to earn a few nickels to put in my pocket. You don't know, I'm gonna say this again, for those of you who are white, I'm not prejudiced, you don't know what it means to be black. You don't know my struggle. You don't know what I went through. I had some hard times. When I was trying to make a living to support, help support my own sisters and brothers, I guess by my color, I was hated. Only thing I wanted to do was make that $5 and come home. But I had to struggle to get to town to get the $5. People passed by in their cars, pushing a lawnmower, and they spit tobacco juice over on me. Like I said before, you don't know my, my struggle. But between all of that, I'm here. I have been blessed. I am happy. I'm not gonna sit here and say I hate white people, no. Or be wrong. Those people that done that to me, boy, they're adults, young. Now, some I have recognized, and I have talked with them, waved their hands. But I'm just telling you how life is on a black person. And some of you might say, "Well, I've been through some of the same struggles." Maybe you have. It's been hard. And it saddens me again when I walk through there, Stone Middle School, and all those trophies cases that were up against the wall. How many? You always cut me off. When I get started. But I wanna say this. We are a good community. We have achieved and accomplished a lot of things by being who we are. We have put aside some differences that we have. And you must. If you wanna see accomplishments take place, you can't look back at the negative side of things because, I'm not gonna say you, 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 you weren't involved in this because you were too young. I think I'm probably the oldest person that is in here. You were too young. You didn't do that. But don't, do not let that rule you. Free your mind and your heart. Let love come in. Let love prevail. And I guarantee you, whatever it is ahead of us here in Stone County, we will accomplish. We can be an example to the rest of the world to let them know that we are free-minded, free-spirited, free-loving. May God bless you.
Mr. Chambers, thank you so much for that. Now, we're gonna dive into the questions, but before we do, as always, we do have rules, and I'm gonna read them off. First one, there will be no arguing. It's okay to disagree in an orderly fashion. There would be no use of profanity of any sort. Everyone in here is required to respect the house of worship. There would be no interruptions when an audience member or a panel is speaking. I will randomly select questions to ask. Audience will be allowed to ask one question at a time when the floor is open. Please know, uh, I will not be able to call on everyone to answer the question. However, we, we will do what we can. Both audience and panel are required to respect one another. Even if your views are different on certain topics, it's okay. The topics of the ques, or the questions that will be asked can be uncomfortable, and it's okay to be uncomfortable. That's the purpose of us being here, to get uncomfortable, to get comfortable so we can move forward. If I feel that a question or a response is about to get out of hand, I will stop that question and I will stop that answer. We will not argue in the house of God. And last, but not least, loosen up. We're here to move forward, get involved, not just tonight, but get involved even after this. So without further ado, I'm gonna move on to the questions. I don't know where law enforcement is, but we're still gonna go on. And if they are chiming in with the questions, please say something, and Lauren will let me know. Y'all ready? The first question. Since the brutal death of George Floyd, there have been several African-Americans killed by white police officers. Richard Brooks in Atlanta, 21-year-old Elijah McSwain of Alora, Colorado, whom case has just been recently opened, and James Porter Garcia of Phoenix, Arizona, who is sleeping in his car, according to sources. What do you believe to be the contributing factors why white police officers are killing black and brown people? Is it due to the lack of training and inexperience in unexpected situations? Are they in fear of their lives, or is it self-motivated or hatred? So either of you could answer that question. No particular order. Just know you have three minutes.
I don't know. By looking at things I see on TV and the news media, and they keep showing how those guys more or less lost their life. I first feel that it was more hatred than it was anything else. I don't think that the psychological teaching of certain people, sometimes you can't get it out of them and let them know that what, that you're a human being. George Floyd's death was a heinous situation where they had time, and off the luck, he was enjoying himself by putting his knee on that man's neck. You think about, and I go back to George Floyd and Emmett Till, two individuals who really haven't had the chance, who could have produced maybe the most outstanding professional officer in the land if they were allowed to live. Death is a strange thing. We know it's coming. We don't know when, where, or how. I do believe that it was a psychological thing in the head of those individuals who contributed this heinous act. Maybe it came from home training, I don't know, or home teaching, I don't know. But it was senseless.
Next, anybody wanna chime in on that question?
Yes, thank you for.
Pastor McBride?
Allowing me to be here. Show of hands, how many people have roaches? Don't be bashful, you have roaches. You know what roaches are? Wave your hand if you have roaches. If you've seen roaches. Racism is like roaches. It's there. And when the light is exposed, the roaches run. Now, we know where the roaches are in our house, and we get rid of them. Help me, somebody. Go here. We know where the bad police officers are, whether they be white, black, brown, or indifferent. Here is the problem. Here is the problem. If most of you saw me in the street, and you didn't know I was a pastor, some of you ladies may be intimidated. I'm the runt of my father's sons. I'm the small guy. Did you hear me? 6'4", 275 pounds. I'm the small guy. So physically, when you see me and you hear my voice, it may intimidate you. Some of us have a roach-like mentality as law enforcement officers. I'm not law enforcement. It goes into training, but then it goes into the perception. Perception is reality. I see it all the time, Pastor Pickard. If I go into Walmart, go into somewhere, somebody holds their purse a little tighter. Because here's a big guy. Not here's a big black guy, but here's a big guy. So ladies, I understand. It can be somewhat intimidating. But as it relates to the problem, we have a problem with systemic racism. It's like roaches. It's everywhere. And until we turn the light on and eradicate it, it takes everyone pointing them out, calling them out, sifting them out, to exterminate them. But just like roaches, you'll never get rid of them all. It was important for me to be here. Let me just share this, if you'll give me a half a minute.
Uh.
Sister Danielle.
One.
One minute.
Yes.
I promise you, I'll take 45 seconds.
Okay.
I laid my father to rest yesterday. I saw my mother this morning, saw my youngest brother, my eldest brother. And I wanted to get back here as a new pastor in this community. I'm not originally from here. I'm originally from Georgia. This is important to me. The same father, the same Marine, the same one who sent all four of his children to college and then on to grad school. This same man grew up in the segregated Jim Crow South. Watched his brother be lynched and publicly castrated. And not one time taught us hate. But he taught us the essence of where we are. That God is love. And if you love God, if you see something that's wrong, and the hardest thing to do is to point out wrong in our own house. That is our problem. As black folk, we don't point out the drug dealers and the gang bangers and those that are bigots in our communities and in our neighborhoods.
Tom, Pastor McBride.
And the Klan had survived for that same reason, because we don't point them out.
I think we have to be very careful. I believe that George Floyd's death was senseless. It was disgusting. And it's embarrassing to me as a white person to see a white person treating a black man that way for no reason. But I think we have to be very, very careful. Because this is what our tendency is. To take the worst of one, the, the worst individual in a group and to paint that whole group in the color of that one individual or those few individuals. I think you're right, brother. I think there are some bad police officers. But we don't need to paint all police officers according to those few bad ones. No, any more than we need to paint all black men as gangsters because there are some black men who are gangsters. Or we don't need to paint all white people as racist because there are some white people who are racist. So, uh, I think we have to be very careful when we, when we start passing judgment on anyone, and that includes police officers. I think the George Floyd video stands alone. It speaks for itself. In these other cases that were mentioned, Danielle, I don't know that that's necessarily the case. And so I would, I would have to withhold judgment on that before I had any, before I could, before I could pass judgment or get more information.
Michael.
You're go.
What's up, everybody? If you don't know me, my name's Tyler. I am the campus pastor.
I am the campus pastor of Venture Church here in Wiggins. Um, w- we all know the, the, uh, death of George Floyd was senseless. Um, hatred toward him as a black man, hatred toward him as a man. It wa- it was, it was a terrible thing that happened. Mr. Chambers, you, uh, mentioned Emmett Till. Um, that's, that's racism, 100%. And for those guys to be able to later come back and admit that they murdered and knew they could not get tried because that's double jeopardy or whatever the rule for that is, that, that's racism. That is, uh, had been allowed by our soci- society. As far as, um, the three guys that were mentioned, um, I don't know about the last two. I've been disconnecting myself more and more from the news uh, because have y'all been feeling like some anger just building up in you the more you watch news? I had to delete Facebook off my app, quit watching the news. I was just getting really frustrated and mad at everybody. Um, with Richard Brooks. Man, that's tricky. Um, that's, that's a different kind of case. And, um, I don't, I don't know if I can say that that was 100% racially motivated. I mean, it was due to fighting. And, um, I'll say this, I, I think that the media likes for us to be at each other's throats. I see way more talking about, you gotta pick this side. If we're just being real, you know, if I stand up and say I people are saying, oh, you hate black people. That's not the case. And then they say if I, if you speak up for black people,
One minute.
You're saying you don't like officers. I, I don't, I don't think those two are mutually exclusive. I mean, I think we gotta look at the heart of each other. And I'm against evil. I'm against racism, racism is evil. And I just want you to know here in, in this room and watching on live that I am for you, I'm for people, and I'm against evil.
Our next question says, "The slogan Black Lives Matter is always accompanied by All Lives Matter. Why is that? Are black lives not considered to be part of all lives? Do you believe that in order for all lives to matter, black lives must be inclusive and go in whatever order?" And your time starts now.
I don't know if I had to go first.
You can leave it later.
No, I'm not. Uh... This slogan that came out with Black Lives Matter. And, but if you notice one thing, they were referring to the ones who were being hurt, abused, and brutalized. But if you looked at the demonstrators that were there, it was just as many white people there in regard to showing a negative side of what had transpired, that it was black. So in a way, all lives that matter. Some of the people that have been destroyed, you can never tell. They could have been the ones who were carrying the seeds for the next government, the next senator, the next president. You never know. But if it's already destroyed, it will never come to be. All lives matter.
I personally think that society as a whole has been manipulated by media. And I say that from the perspective of, if I say black lives matter, I would say it from the perspective of there's a problem with black life mattering as a whole to everyone. But that's an opinion. If I said the fire truck is headed to your house, well, why is it going to your house? It's because your house is the one that's on fire. We have problems in Chicago, we have problems in Atlanta, we have problems all throughout this country. We know the statistics. I don't have to give you the FBI statistics. But here's where the manipulation comes in. It's because every time that I hear someone say that, why can't you say all lives matter? What about the black-on-black crime in Chicago? I'm really miffed, Danielle. Because if you look at statistics, statistically, most ethnicities kill each other at a higher rate than any other ethnicity. Quote-unquote, "Most white men kill white men faster than black men kill black, uh, kill white men." But the problem is, when we look at the numbers that we've been given, the list goes on and on. One that sticks out in my mind and really bothers me, and I'm gonna wrap this up in 30 seconds, is Philando Castile. It's because he's pulled over, he says, "I have a concealed carry permit. I have a weapon here." And this officer with no regard to his wife and child in the car opens fire. It leaves a bad stain. And so now psychosomatically, we start grouping all Caucasian male police officers in one group and all black men in another group. Listen, I understand all life matters. As a preacher of a gospel, all life matters. But I have to look within my own neighborhood first. First. If something is happening disproportionately to them, I have to address it.
30 seconds.
And it does not mean that black life is more important than white life, brown life, or red life. And I think a lot of people that get upset because they're saying they're seeing black lives matter, but they're hearing in their mind only black lives matter. And no one has ever said that. Understand that. We can't get to the point to saying only black lives matter.
I am so glad to get to answer this question. Um, because I think it's one that, uh, I think, this is one of those questions that black people need to be asking white people and white people need to be asking black people instead of talking about it amongst themselves. Um, so, black lives matter. Got no problem with that. And I don't even have to qualify by saying all lives matter because the problem right now is that black lives are being, are the, are the ones being devalued at the moment. And so it's important for people, and white people in particular, to say black lives matter. I will say this, though. There needs to be a separation between the phrase, "Black Lives Matter", and the organization, "Black Lives Matter". Don't know if everyone is aware. Um, but the Black Lives Matter organization, as they identify themselves online on their website, has a whole other agenda that I don't think really, I don't think really involves black people. Uh, it's, it's, if you read their, their manifesto and what they're about, it is they are wanting to destroy the nuclear family and they're wanting to take down, um, they're wanting to take down biblical principles. And I've, I've got a problem with the Black Lives Matter organization. And I think every Christian, everyone who calls on the name of Christ should have a problem with the organization as well and what they support. But again, I'm not, I refuse
One minute.
to paint a whole group of people in one, uh, in one, in one characteristic, in one characterization, uh, based on a few bad individuals.
Danielle, what was the question?
"The slogan Black Lives Matter is always accompanied by All Lives Matter. Why is that? Are black lives not considered to be a part of all lives? Do you believe that in order for all lives to matter, black lives must be inclusive?"
Gotcha. Um, you know, I, I think a lot of these arguments happen on social media. And so you say, "Black lives matter." I'm a white person, no, all lives matter, my life matters. A- and maybe not understanding the basis from where they're coming from. Uh, we can't, you, you, you can't tell people what you really mean over a Facebook post. That's senseless. You know, you all go to bed after scrolling through Facebook and you're mad and you can't sleep. So you get up, you eat ice cream, then you gain five more pounds. It's because of Facebook. That's where that comes from, that's why we all getting fat out here. Because we keep scrolling through Facebook and get angry, gotta eat ice cream. But I think that with that, it, I think it's a lack of understanding um, of what we're saying with that. Like, uh, Pastor Robbie said, you know, for the people who I know that have a problem with Black Lives Matters is the organization, not the fact that, Danielle, you as a black woman, you matter and your life matters. Um, you know, uh, Kaepernick, we all got different views on him kneeling uh, during the National Anthem. Um, and for a lot of people, they see that as disrespectful to the nation. And so you got cap and that goes with Black Lives Matter. And so for a lot of people, they say, "I love, I, I love you, but I, I don't know if I can support kneeling, kneeling during the National Anthem." So I think it goes deeper. And when we just try to say, "Black lives matter," no, all lives matter. You gotta, you gotta have more one-on-one conversations and really talk, what do you really mean when you say that? So I think it goes deeper than just a surface level with that. There's gotta be more understanding to why you believe that and why you say that. Was that a good answer?
It was a good answer.
I'll do better next time.
Before I ask any more questions, I'm gonna open the floor up to the audience and any one on Facebook Live that would like to, uh, ask a question. Lauren, do we have any questions on Facebook Live? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. You may have to speak up where you can be heard. You don't sound loud.
That's the designated audience mic right there.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right. Can everybody hear me? Uh, this is kind of a curiosity question. Uh, you know, in these discussions, what I hear a lot is people, a lot of white folks I hear say, "Well, you know, slavery's been over for all these years and the civil rights movement's been over 50, 60 years and we just need to quit talking about it and we just need to move on." I have an idea of what I think black people might hear when that is said, but I'd like to hear from you gentlemen, when you hear people say that, what are you hearing? What, what, what does that mean to you when you hear people just saying things like that?
It goes back to what I said earlier. Some of the things that happened to black people, you probably wasn't even born during that time. I can't hold hatred against you because you weren't there or you wasn't born. But it's still in the back of my mind. And I told you about some of the tragic things that I had to go through, even as a young boy coming up. And I have faced some of those same things as an adult. Some people, they hold ideas about the flag. They hold, you mentioned something about Kaepernick. They were hating that young man, an outstanding player, because what he believed in. He saw what was taking place. It wasn't an idea that him, what he was not standing for the flag, that wasn't his cause. He was trying to show that something was wrong, something was different. Right now, we see that. When that first happened to Kaepernick, nobody could see that except a very few people. Hatred is something that runs deep. And hatred will eventually destroy you. I have been told this. That some of the people, about some older people, or that I am, that took part in some heinous crimes against blacks several years ago, they saw it before they left this earth. Listen to what I just said. They were part of destroying, uh, taking a black life, uh, causing harm to a black person before they left this earth. And black people, men and women, been working for white folks all the time. And they heard the noises and the sounds
One minute.
that those people making before they left this earth. When Satan get on your back, he gonna ride you. If you hadn't asked for forgiveness, it was time then to ask for forgiveness if you wanted to walk in.
Pastor McBride.
What's your name, brother? Brother Steve, let, 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 let me respond to this in a real-life situation. Uh, as a, as a young pastor, as a young man, as a father and a grandfather, I had a very poignant conversation with a classmate who says, "You know, we didn't have these problems going to school. Uh, there in Carroll High School, we went 15-0, undefeated as football state champs. We were only scored on twice in 15 games." He comes to me, says, "We were black, we were white, but we were a team." This is my personal opinion because I don't fall into Brother Chambers' age group. And he said the same thing that you said. I said, "Have you ever thought about it this way?" He says, "What do you hear?" I said, "What I hear is two things. I, first of all, I hear a lot of so-called quote-unquote white people who want to deny the past. If we can admit it, the American enslavement period was unlike any other. It happened. It happened. Don't say I wasn't around. Don't say it may not have been my ancestors. I'm not accusing every person that doesn't look like me of it. But when you try to minimize what has happened, and that's what most people that look like me, because we have in our minds the Dred Scott decision, the Three-Fifths Compromise, the 13th Amendment. We have all these things in our minds that we know from this standpoint, hey, look, my father fought in Vietnam and in Korea for this country. But when he came back, he couldn't even wear his uniform. He couldn't even look at someone like you, Steve, in the eye. He couldn't even come into a place of worship like this. So for the next generation that's behind Brother Chambers,
One minute.
For us, it's, you're telling us that you are denying that part of our American experience. And you're forcing us to accept this pastorized version. It's been processed. And so what you have is you have things that rise up. I wanna leave you with a quote. It was from a lady, Asada Shakur,
30 seconds.
who was a member of the Black Liberation Army. But the quote I want to leave with you is so poignant. It's, she said that, "A wall is nothing but a wall, is nothing at all. It can be broken down." We have got to break down the wall as white people about admitting it happened. And as black people, let's get past the fact that it happened.
Good answer. Any more questions from the audience? Yes, sir. Mr. Jones, would you please come to the mic?
Mike Jones.
Mike Jones.
Uh, I have been doing some research. And I did a, a little film, I saw a little film about Darryl Davis and Robert Keller. You can look that up. And Mr. Davis was a black reporter. And Robert Keller was a Grand Dragon, whatever they call it, Grand Wizard of the KKK. He interviewed him. It stung me, I'm, I'm looking at it. And he invited him to a hotel with his secretary and he came in, the Grand Wizard, Mr. Keller. He came in and he was shocked that a black man was sitting in front of him. Both of them were scared, both of them were nervous. But Mr. Kelly, the white guy, had his bodyguard with him with a pistol. And he says, "As they was conversing and talking, a noise, both of them heard. And both of them freaked out. They thinking, "It's ready to go off now. It's ready to be on." But to their mind, they said that it was a cooler with a bucket of ice with cokes in it. And you know how the ice get water? Things start flowing. So they talked a little bit, and after Mr. Kelly got ready to go out, he gave Mr. Davis his call. Said, "Call me sometime. This is a Grand Wizard." So he said, "I began to talk to him." They began to talk. They invited one another to each other's home. And they engaged with the conversation. And as the reporter was saying, he said, "I knew that there was a wall built up in his mind." It's gonna take conversations like this, little by little, because it was ingrained in him, it was embedded in him, the hatred of another race. But he said, "I kept talking to him and talking to him, and the Grand Wizard denounced the KKK. And they became best friends." Now, if that can happen with a black reporter and a Grand Wizard...
One minute, Mr. Jones.
It can happen in a small town like this because in a small town like this, somebody know somebody. Steve and I know each other. Larry and I know each other. So it shouldn't be that hard to tear down that wall.
Thirty seconds.
So we can, we can do it. And Mr. Chambers said this, and I always quote this. If we say we come into the house of the Lord and we say we love God, how can you not? And the Bible says that Jesus had compassion
Fifteen.
on other people. Doesn't matter who it was. Jesus had compassion. And you mean to tell me you being silent because your brothers and sisters are out there suffering and nothing being said?
Tom.
Thank you.
We do have a question from Facebook Live. I'm gonna read it really quick. It says, "We need representation in our schools. What can we do to recruit and retain black teachers? We need their stories, their guidance, and their knowledge." Mr. Chambers, this question is directed to you.
I'm gonna say this. I didn't hear that last word. You're right. And let me say this.
Repeat the question? Sure.
She said, "Repeat the comment."
It was a question. It said...
Her comment was, "When Mr. Chambers were her principal, there were many African-American teachers."
I'm gonna answer this to this question. In the school systems now, when I was involved several years ago, when I was a student in school, one teacher had thirty-five or forty students in her class at the predominantly black school. Students learn at different rates because of their intellect. Even in elementary school, Ms. Steele, never forget her name, she had about thirty-five or forty students in there. Some of those students, what you call, had problems. But every student in that classroom was able to learn. They have this thing now about special ed. In many ways, it's a cop-out.
Yeah, it is.
In many ways, teachers are not doing their functional job. If you are a qualified teacher, you should be able to teach any student. I'm not gonna say he gonna end up with an A, but he should be able to learn something in your presence. You should take, if you are really dedicated to what you're doing and you really interested in students' learning, every student you have in your classroom not gonna make an A. It's up to you. I saw students, when I was in elementary school, who were, what you say, a little emotionally disturbed. Yet and still, that one teacher had time to deal with the thirty-sixth of it that was all right, so to speak. And she also talked to one that was emotionally disturbed. Right now, they have this thing about special ed. A lot of people put their kids in there as a cop-out, and some kids accept the fact that they wanna go there. Black teachers. You have them. I have recommended some. But you can't, you're not gonna hire a teacher if Mr. so-and-so's daughter graduated from a school district you holding a job for. Can't do it, but it's being done. Black teachers were very interested within the learning process. Right now, I think they only have about one or two qualified black teachers at the high school. When I left there, there were several there. What happened? Why, if one black leave, replacement will be black. It's not taking place. You have black teachers now. Friends of mine
Fifteen.
have left Mississippi. They are doing outstanding jobs, most of them retired. Now, they're doing outstanding jobs with accolades where they were. They became principals of their school. Only educational committee, when they shut down schools, they're black, they're doing outstanding jobs. One right here in your own county left here, became principal of Moss Point High School today. Just left last year, year before last. He could have been principal of people.
Tom.
Why didn't you give him the time?
Anybody else wanna chime in on that question before we move on? Any more questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Would you step to the mic, please? I seen another hand raised back there. You're next. Could you step to the mic, please, so we can hear you?
Can you hear me a little better now?
Yes.
Okay. These conversations are good. They're a great beginning. And as you said, it's relationship with one another that really makes the difference. Because if you and I sit across the dining room table from each other and we share food and we share life together, we get to know each other's hearts, our burdens, our struggles. If we worship together, that builds a bond, it builds a bridge, and it forges community and love in a way that nothing else can. And these conversations we're having here are important. But I guess my heart is that the next step is, how do we come together? Not just wave at each other in the Walmart and said, "Hey, I saw you at the town hall meeting. I appreciate what you said." But how do we forge relationship? It's been said that Sunday morning is the most segregated hour of the week. How do we change that? What are some practical steps that we can take to begin to build relationship with each other that makes a lasting difference?
So who wanna go first?
I will. This is something that the Lord's really laid on my heart a lot recently. Every one in here, white people, we love to brag about having black friends. That's what we always, "I always got lots of black friends," is what I hear a lot of white people say. And so, and what we should be doing is these questions that we have. We should be asking those to our black friends. And you, black people, need to be asking their white friends these questions. Because what happens is, and I wrote about this in my article in the paper this week, what happens is, so often, we talk to each other, people that look like me and Tyler talk to each other about people that look like these gentlemen, but we don't talk to these gentlemen. And so it's just, it's important. It's so important. Every... You have black friends, white people. Black people, you have white friends, but your relationships are such that you never talk about the really important stuff. And the stuff that we're talking about in here tonight is the really important stuff. And so I guess, Ms. Diane, my answer to that question would be is to just talk to your black friends and talk about real stuff, real and raw stuff. Ask those questions that you have. You know, I have lots of white friends that disagree with the flag being taken down. And when they talk to me about it, I'll say, "Do you have any black friends?"
One minute.
And they say, "Yes." And I'll say, "Well, why don't you go ask your black friend how they feel about the flag and hear their heart and what they have to say." And that's the kind of stuff we've gotta do. It's uncomfortable. But you know what? If a black mother has to talk to her black son about how to behave when he's pulled over by a police officer, that's a tough conversation to have. If you can have that conversation, you can also have these tough conversations as well.
Who's next?
I'm gonna be a little bit more radical. As much as I love Dr. King, I love El Haji Malik Shabazz, Malcolm X. You want to solve the problem, go back to the root. You know why Sundays were segregated? Because that was the law. You wanna change the law? It can't come from the pulpit. It should start there, but it's gotta come from the pews. If this is your place of worship, tell your pastor, "Look, Pastor Robbie, I love you. I'm gonna bring my offering, but I'm going to worship down at Wiggins Church of God and Christ. I'm going down to Welcome Hill. I'm going to New Zion. I'm going somewhere else." Because, and please don't get offended when I say this, we didn't have a choice. The AME Church came about, help me, Pastor Pickett, because the United Methodist would not let them worship with them. So when we all get to heaven, what a time, what a time it's gonna be. We gonna be surprised. We gonna really be surprised when we get to heaven and we might see Saddam Hussein. When we get to heaven, we might see an Adolf Hitler. When we get to heaven, we might see a David Duke. You know the reason I use that stark contrast? Because there was no fakeness in them. We fake it all week long. And so we have developed these erroneous terms. He knows the word church, ecclesia, the called out. There is no white church or black church, but it was legislated and we haven't changed it. So if I walk into any house of worship, I'm never a visitor because I'm a child of God. That's the way I feel. And until people of all ethnicity, one race, human race, irregardless of what, if we have melanin in our skin or if we don't, if we walk in ready to worship, and then we have to take in account the cultural differences within worship. And sometimes that scares some people when you truly walk into a Pentecostal experience. Well, I'm Baptistical. I don't believe in religion. I believe in relationship. One Lord, one faith, one baptism. And if you can believe in the death, burial, resurrection of Jesus Christ, I don't care what you look like, what you smell like, where you have been, where you're going. You're welcome in the house of God. That's how we get to the next level. We stop doing what we've been doing. Now, after this pandemic is over, I'm gonna get with these brothers. And I know I'm going over, and I'm gonna be disobedient. That's just one time, Sister Danielle, because I want it on the record. We are going to...
He's about to get stopped.
We're gonna turn Stone County and Wiggins upside down.
Yes, we are.
Because we're gonna have a street revival. And it is my vision that every preacher in this city and this county has at least ten minutes. And everybody shows up, and you won't know who's preaching that night.
Tom. Tyler. Did you wanna answer for me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Great question. Anybody been to a high school football game? Stone County High School football game? You know where the black folks at? You know where the white folks at? Start right there. You go to a basketball game? You know where the black folks at? You know where the white folks at? Start right there. I mean, we move in these circles, and I love the circle I move in because it's comfortable and I know it. You gotta be intentional when moving outside of your circle into other circles with other people. And when that happens, Rhodey gets beat on the basketball court, just saying. That's all I got.
Let me say something, please.
Yes, sir. You can get... Tyler's time.
What you said about the ballgames?
He has two minutes left.
When I first started teaching as a young man, just turned twenty, twenty-one years of age, fresh out of college, I went to a school where they had had one of the largest riots, I guess, in the state. And I walked in the classroom, white kids on these three rows, black kids on those three rows. And you could cut the tension in there with a knife. I was a little afraid, to be honest with you. And I was trying to figure out a way. I can't teach like this. I'm scared if I turn my back to the white kids, they might throw chalk at me. I'm scared if I turn my back to the black kids, they might throw bricks at me. I was afraid. I pondered that for two weeks. Class started. I asked all students to step out in the hallway. When I call your name, that's the seat you gonna take. I didn't wait to be told. When I call your name, John Anderson was white, you sit on that side.
One minute.
Bobby Jones was black, you sit right behind. And I done that all the way through the class, all that day. And for about a week, they wouldn't talk to each other. But eventually, they start to communicate across the aisle. Sometimes you have to take the initiative and put things in perspective the way you see them. Don't wait on somebody else.
Next question in the back. Could you come to the front, please? Could you step up to the mic, please? They can't hear you.
In 1974, when we first moved to Houston, I lived in, we moved into a rough neighborhood. And when I first went to school, I went to an all-black school, and we was the only white kids. The teachers taught, I mean, these teachers taught you about history, black history, white history, until 1978, when we had to move to a surrogate school with white teachers. And one day I was in school. This white teacher turned around and asked me, "Who was doing the essay?" And she turned around and she said, "Who taught you this? It's wrong." I said, "Wait a minute." I say, "I was raised up in the neighborhood where these teachers taught the right way." I mean, teachers are teaching now the way, but they're not really teaching history the way it's supposed to be taught. And I used to get pushed around, bullied and all that. But I start realizing, the older I got, I say, "You know, we supposed to love everybody." And I would just wish sometimes that the teachers now, they not really wanna teach. All they wanna do is just put something on the board and say, "Hey, do this and all this." But if they can... Why do they become teachers if they wanna become teachers? But I put in my heart that when I was taught, I was taught the way that black teachers taught me, you know? And then a lot of white teachers didn't understand that. So in my life, I had to fight myself, you know? And there's one good thing about it, is that when you did fight...
One minute, sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. When you did fight a colored person or a different color, they became your friend because you fought back. You weren't scared. And I had a... And I had a young lady that taught me, she said, "You know, you have to go out there and fight because if you don't go out there and fight, they gonna keep on messing with you." But what I was saying about the teachers, you were right, you know? When they start learning and getting their education, they wanted to learn, but they got pushed back. And I was taught, I was born four days after Martin... I was born four days after Martin Luther King died, when he died. But when I went to school, that was the first thing they taught us about Martin Luther King. No matter what. But what I'm saying is, why are they not teaching history like this? I mean, history like they're supposed to. But I'm just giving that.
Say it again, you called my name out. What's your name, please?
My name is Brother Anthony. Anthony Morgan.
Anthony Morgan?
Yes, sir.
You faced something that black students faced during the time of segregation. You say you was the only white student at a predominant black school, is that right?
Me and my brothers, yeah.
You and your brothers, okay? And you felt a little strange when you got there. You felt strange more than several, I'm sure several days or several times because you could not see anybody of your same race. That's the way that the black kids felt when they first started the integration process in Stone County. They sent one or two students over here to various schools. You mentioned about the teaching aspect. I had never had physics in my life. I came from Lacher High School. They had very little equipment to work with. When I got to Jackson State University, I was taught by the youngest PhD to ever leave the AL University. I was older than he was when I was a student. I had never had physics, he taught physics. This young man came in there, get a piece of chalk, start on that blackboard, start... And then on weekends, we played basketball with him. But Monday morning, he was strictly business. We were failing.
I appreciate it.
Like everybody in the class was failing. So we organized, excuse their word. We had to do something to slow this guy down. Don't get me wrong, he was heavy. He was writing and talking and mumbling, it just seemed like a song he was singing. We didn't understand. He walked in that Monday morning, we stopped him. Most of the students there were from the Delta, very poor schools, where I came, I came from a small place too. But the school they came from was smaller than what I had. We stopped and listened and talked to him. We talked about 35 or 40 minutes. He said, "Why didn't you tell me all of this when I first started?" He was under pressure that everybody in there was exceptional students. He backed up. He started a slow approach. I passed. C minus or D plus, I didn't care. But that young man backed up. He's changed his way of teaching, he's changed his whole philosophy of us. And we talked to him as individuals, how we came to the university, parents didn't have nothing, no schooling, very little, from small places. He backed up and practically everybody in that classroom passed. I was glad to get a D plus or C minus.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're gonna move on to the questions, back to the questions that I have originally. But before we do, there was a suggestion to answer Ms. Diane's question. Is that name Diane?
Come to the mic.
Come to the mic, please.
They won't be able to hear you online if you don't.
How do we start? I think I got an idea. Got a phone call, Tuesday.
One minute.
One minute. Okay, got a phone call, Tuesday, and it was a Tennessee number. I didn't know who it was, so I just answered. And someone said, "Brother Sherman." I said, "Hello?" And it was brother Larry. I said, "Man," I started not to answer the phone. So he said, "Hey, this is what I'm thinking about, me and my wife." And this is where it started, Ms. Diane. He invited me and my family to his family for dinner. That's where it starts, it. That's an invite. Because we have to be uncomfortable. Well, Tyler said, when you go to a ballgame, when you go to the ballgame, and I've seen that too, all my life. Blacks over here, whites over here. We got to be uncomfortable. I don't like Danielle, thank you.
Next question. There's been much controversy regarding the removal of the Confederate emblem from the Mississippi State flag. What are your thoughts about the removal of the flag? Do you see it as history or heritage being removed? Or do you see it as a step forward for all Mississippians? Answer in any order.
Well, since I'm not a native Mississippian, but I've been here for so long, this is home now, well over 20 years, and we dealt with it in Georgia. Let me share my perspective. Do your research. Facts are facts. And whenever someone asks me that, Danielle, what I normally do is I ask them one question. If we remove the Confederate battle emblem from the canton and replace anything else, would you have a problem with it? Well, yeah, that's my heritage, that's my history. It's yours. I said, "Well, no, it's not." I said, "Just look at the history of the Confederate battle emblem." And then they said, "Well, you're a pastor, you shouldn't have an opinion." I said, "Well, it's true I shouldn't, but I'm very opinionated." Here is where I think we have the problem, is we talk at each other and not to one another. We don't talk to one another. And in war, someone is going to win, someone is going to lose. Now, everyone knows outside of the swastika, that is the number one symbol, most recognizable symbol of hate and hatred and divisiveness. Even if it is your proud heritage as a Confederate. Are you a Confederate or are you a Mississippian? Are you an American or are you a Confederate? Do you want to go backwards or do you want to move forwards? If you want to move forward, fly it at your house. Put it on your car, put it on your arm. But don't force taxpayers to fly it. Don't force us to have to pay for it. A lot of people say, "Well, they didn't allow the legislature..."
One minute.
"...the legislature didn't allow us to vote on it. It was done by the rules." Plain and simple, there was nothing illegal about it. The non-binding referendum in 2001 was non-binding. The vote was non-binding. The legislature did not have to adhere by that. You put it to a vote, let the people... Well, we don't vote on the budget, we don't vote on anything else. I'm sure there are a lot of educators that would love to vote on fully funding education for once in the state of Mississippi.
Thirty seconds.
Let's move forward by putting a banner, a symbol, that all Mississippians can get behind and move away from our divided past.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'm allowed to speak. I'm gonna sit down, I'm an old man. But what he said about the flag reminded me something my dad said. My father spent four years in the military. He went overseas, he fought during World War II. And he said that they were having a hallelujah time on the train when they were coming back into this country, into the South, until they hit the Mason-Dixon line. He said that they were together, black and white soldiers coming in. But when they hit the Mason-Dixon line, somebody said, "We back in God's country now." And when they said that, they start to separate themselves, black and white. They fought together in foxholes, side by side. They saw their friends and their brothers get killed. Blood was shared by all. They drunk out of the same canteen, ate out of the same helmet for as food is concerned. Blacks helped the white brothers. White brothers helped the black brothers. But when that troop train started to come south, they say, "We in God's country now." And they separated themselves out. You think about this. The Vietnam War, black and whites fought side by side. They shared blood, they lost soldiers, they lost brothers. My brother was in Vietnam. He had a book where they graduated from basic training. He say, "I lost that, that's my brother, I lost him over there missing." It was humorous. They develop a relationship. We need to ignore the negative thing that's holding us back as a family of people. And maybe that was one of the things that was holding us back. Let it fly. And I have this...
One minute.
This is, I'm gonna say this in less than a minute, I think. They have on there, they start putting this thing, "In God we trust" on that flag. I'm not for that at all. "In God we trust" is on every piece of money that's being printed. Mississippi only looking at money? I don't think the South will continue to advance unless we come with something of our own ideas. The idea about putting "In God we trust" on a flag to represent us, I don't see it. I'm not for it.
You know, anything that's divisive, I don't think it has a place here. And, you know, that was the battle flag that was fought in the Civil War. And depending on what professor you listen to will say it was or it was not over slavery. But every 11 states that fought for the Confederate said they were fighting to keep the slaves. Mississippi was the richest state in our country because we had the most slaves. Why aren't we the poorest in our country now? I think there's a lot of irony in that. I'm for removing anything that brings division. And, you know, some people see that and they see pride. My family fought in that war. Some people see it and they say that, that was the emblem that kept my people down for so long. If it divides, let's get rid of it, let's move forward. Let's move forward.
Y'all gonna sit down, I'm gonna sit down. It was my idea to put these mic stands up here so we could stand up and talk, but that's all right. I've been really outspoken on this issue for, I've been here at First Baptist Wiggins for five years, I think. My first trip to the Southern Baptist Convention, we voted on the resolution to repudiate the Confederate battle emblem. And I had to come back and explain to the folks at First Baptist Wiggins why I voted for that resolution. So I've been outspoken on this issue. For me, it's this, I'm a minister of the gospel. And I have brothers and sisters from every nation, all different colors. And if that, if I can't stand for something that's going to be hurtful to my brothers and sisters in Christ, and I can't stand for something, I can't take a stand for something that is gonna hinder my ability to, that's just a turnoff for my black friends and especially my black lost friends. And you know what? I've said this many times, every, you take every flag in the world and pile them up and the whole pile is not worth one soul going to hell. And so that's sort of been my, that's been my stand on it. And my position hasn't changed. And I do have a lot of friends who disagree with me. And, you know, still have conversations. But just the slippery slope argument, you know, well, Brother Robbie, they've got our flag. The next are gonna come for our, the American flag. The next are gonna come for the cross, and the next are gonna come for the pictures of Jesus, you know? And here's the thing, here's my response to that. Our faith is not based on images and things. Our faith is in God, in a risen Savior. And He'll never be taken away. So you can have all of that stuff. You can have all that stuff.
Pastor McBride.
Can I have just one minute?
One minute.
All right, just one minute.
One, and it starts now.
Chronicles Keeper, listen, Pastor Pickard said something I think is really profound. Is because we are notorious for being Bible-thumping, Bible-carrying Christians in the South. But we need to stop being Christians and start being disciples. We need to stop being Christ-like and start following Christ. We let a flag divide us, we let skin color divide us, we let education divide us.
Thirty seconds.
We let all these things divide us. But yet and still, we're going to heaven, well, to heck, you say. There's no way in the world, 15 seconds, we can get to heaven if a flag means more than the blood of Jesus.
Ten seconds. One minute, it starts now.
We responsible for a lot of that. We stood back and we let them take prayer out of the schools. It starts there. When I was started as an elementary school student, the first thing we had to do was to recite the Pledge of Allegiance and then say a prayer. That's really how we started to learn how to pray was in first grade. Jesus will. She don't care what you said, but she rotated around within that classroom as first graders.
Thirty seconds.
Prayer is lost in the schoolhouse. It's lost because we let it be lost. Thank you.
Well, good job. This is the last question for tonight, and we're gonna move on to Plan of Actions. And this question is for the pastors, everybody. It says, "Seeing the recent killings of black and brown people, what measures are you taking to ensure that your congregation, that are made of both white and African Americans, are standing together in the face of police brutality?" Answer in any order. Somebody three minutes...
Since I'm the newest pastor in the community, a little under a year, because everyone knows Ray Boggs, Captain and Sheriff's Department, he's one of our deacons, I really don't worry about personal protection. Hear me clearly, interpret it the way you want. I am a proud Second Amendment supporter. I will be until the day that they lay me down. And I spend my time at the range. It does not make me violent, it makes me smart. Because you don't bring a knife to a gunfight. I never let my wife or my children know where any weapon is in my home. I let her know when I have it with me. But here's the thing. I don't carry it because I need it. I carry it so that she knows she's safe. I have a larger responsibility as a pastor to make sure that everyone that comes in that sanctuary is safe. Now, I am a proud advocate, and I tell those that visit New Morne Star, those that are members, go get you enhanced care. You know why? Because the devil got some crazy folk out there. And you want to see whether or not they really got a devil in them? Put that forty-cal hollow point in them. And then call me afterwards and we'll pray and get you an attorney. It does not make you un-Christlike to protect your families, Dee. That's your responsibility. My responsibility is to teach you the smart and legal way to do it. Not to go out there brandishing, waving the... Not to go out there brandishing waving the fire on. But if someone breaks in your home, are you gonna go call 911 and sit there and pray that they get there beforehand?
One minute.
Or what are you going to do? Ever since what happened in South Carolina, houses of worship have come under scrutiny. No, we don't have metal detectors. I am not an advocate of having armed security in the sanctuary, but these are different days and times. I'm gonna leave you with this, it's a biblical precedent.
Forty-five.
And this would change my thinking. Remember Pastor, uh, Robbie, when Jesus was going through Gethsemane and he got ready to be arrested, and Peter cut off the ear of Malphus? Peter was armed in the presence of God in the flesh. Now, Jesus said, "I didn't need it," but he never did say that Peter didn't need it. So the principle I get from that is, there is a time and a place for me to be armed, but when I'm in the pulpit-
Ten.
I don't need it. But when I get down, I might, cause somebody might get mad with it.
Five.
What was that question again, Danielle?
It said, given, seeing the recent events of the killings of black and brown people, what measure are you taking to ensure that your congregation that's made up of both black and white are taking a stand against police brutality?
How, what, hold on just a second. With, with, uh, with all due respect, brother, uh, I don't understand your answer to that question.
My answer to the question was, it's not police brutality. Because if Pastor Robbie and I could just talk for a second.
For three minutes.
For three minutes.
And it's gonna be over.
Here's my viewpoint, Pastor Robbie, is most police officers, when they see me, are gonna be number one, physically intimidated. Because they're gonna try to figure out, can they take me?
I'm pretty intimidated.
Okay, well, most of them don't know that I used to box. And that my hands are registered in Georgia. So, I tell the members at New Morning Star, I don't fight. Don't remember, I've forgotten how to fight. It's a choice. My question was, I don't think that you arm yourself for police brutality. You arm yourself to protect yourself, period.
Yeah.
Whether it's a police officer or anyone.
But the question, and, and again, respectfully, the question was, how, how are we combating this by bringing people together? Um, so, um, uh, the way I interpret the question is, how, how am I leading First Baptist Church-
You have to-
-to cross over and make a difference in what we're talking about, right?
That's your, yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I think maybe the question was just, I, I don't know. But, um, I, I guess I would say, y'all are here. Um, and I'm glad, uh, that we could host this event, and, uh, I hope that we can do more of that.
So the answer to that question is, let me make sure that you're answering the question. You're saying that we're here, when I say we, black people are here, because you opened the church saying that both the, your, the white congregation members are here welcoming black people into the church?
Right.
Is the answer to your question?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that's what you were saying.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers, you were gonna answer that question, so go right ahead.
I'm not gonna answer them. Yes, sir, I want you to-
Okay, I was about to say, uh-
But what I was saying, what he said was, how can we combat all of this? And one way is what we're doing now. Dialogue. You asking a question, trying to give you the answer. I'm not gonna give you any lies within my answer, I'm gonna tell you the way I actually feel and what actually transpired. And when you have a, ask a question, you have a real need to know that answer, else you would never ask that question. He mentioned about firearms in the church. You go to some of the conferences, and I'm Methodist. And they'll tell you, have somebody there. Not just protect the preacher, but take the, but take the little chain that we have on the table. Because people are doing, if you notice, people are robbing churches, vandalizing churches. And the last place they figured out is where, a church door is always open, so to speak. They figure they can come in and pick up and take whatever out of the church and take it and sacrifice it at a pawn shop. Your microphone, system, anything. So be cautious. I'm not gonna tell you to bring a weapon into the church. But don't you be too far from it. You can never tell what happened. We were right there on Portinette Highway. Somebody has to be watching our backs. I had that choice for a couple of weeks. I watched it from inside, looking out. Had to walk around, vandalizing cars. It was, my eyes quit. Church were the targets. And they might be again. So you start preparing for that now. Within your church, have a registered Christian with a registered weapon. Thank you.
Um, to help with that, I think proximity to where we are with one another, um, so, meaning, you know, race, race relations. Right, you, you hear, um, like, I hear black people getting killed more by police officers. Tell me how you see that. Like, I, I need to know your perspective, and you, you need to know my perspective. And so I say, like, in the context of Venture Church, us having those open and transparent conversations. Help me to see your side of the story. Help me to see your side of this conversation so I can better understand. Because I think if we, we stay at a distance from one another, then we're just gonna pick a side and run with it. So, at, at Venture, having honest and open, um, conversations, um, we have a lot of small groups in our church, and, um, there are both white and black people in those small groups. And so, just being, being in one another's home, eating together, hanging out together, having those conversations together. I think that's one of the ways we start. And one of the things that I hope Venture has been able to display to Stone County is that we are for people. And we are for you, um. You know, I get the opportunity to come and, and help over at y'all's church to, to deliver food. And this past Saturday, we were able to, uh, go throughout the U and over in the dishes and pass out food as well. Um, so I, I want people in my church to, to not just serve, but to have conversations with the people that, that we're serving with. Um, and then, you know, our church is always open. Last summer, um, Martin Atkins was shot. And that was on a Wednesday when we had people from that community at my church. Because we had, we had been in the U Sunday night, Monday night, Tuesday night. Let's have a party, let's hang out, let's have fun.
One minute.
We were at the church Wednesday night with tons of people there, and, and that's when he was shot. And so, we went, I went back over there, I went to, um, his grandma's house. She taught me how to cook chitlins. I ain't know what I was doing, but next thing I know, my hands are all in batter. And we had his funeral at our church to say, we're, we're not just here to-
Forty-five.
To say, you know, we're for you, we're gonna give you some food, but we're here, like, we love you. We, we want a relationship with you. I just don't wanna, I just don't wanna know Rhodey is the black dude that I play ball with. I wanna know him as a person. So, that's how I think we help open honest conversations, being close to one another.
That will wrap up our question and answer session. Oh, well, no, it won't. And you have a question?
I guess it's a question, um, as an educator, I am not originally from Stone County, but I married someone from here. And I just finished my year twenty-six at Stone County Schools. Year twenty-six. And so, as an educator, I've came in as a stranger, and I got to be very close to people. Mr. Chambers, my husband thinks very highly of you. I think very highly of you. Um, but I'm also a history teacher. And my mother's, ooh, that's hot. Uh, my mother spoke really frank about race to me coming up. Um, the things that had happened to her dad. In fact, my grandfather owned a gas station in Weston, Mississippi that was torched by the Klan. And he was beat up by the Klan because of his relationship with African Americans in that society. They were trying to tell him something. It's a warning. And so, probably about year twelve into my career here, I noticed that that was lacking in knowledge, history. All students did not know the history of their own state. The good, the bad, the ugly, that's what I call it. I said, "American history, it's a book about a bunch of dead white guys." That's how I start my class. There's very few women, very few Native Americans, very few Hispanics. This past year in my class, I had four Hispanic students that were fluent in Spanish. That wouldn't have happened twenty years ago. We're now getting more diverse, whether we like it or not. And so I wanna know, as an educator, I have very frank conversations about race in my class, but I feel like it should not be necessarily coming, I hate to say it, from a white lady. And I tell them, I said, "I can only tell you what it feels like to be a middle-aged white woman. I can't tell you what it feels like to be a young black man." But I have them in my class, and because we've developed a relationship of safety in that room, my students ask very frank questions. I had sixth graders, and we studied the true civil rights movement. When I say that, the civil rights movement is not just a very frame of that. We began with, where did slavery come from? Where? And we covered it all the way through. Think about sixth graders who want to know what the Jim Crow South is. I put up pictures of Emmett Till's face in that Groffin. Blew their minds. My white students-
One minute.
My black students. My Asian student that I had there. How do I, as an educator? Because I feel like I'm the only one that was having that conversation as a history teacher. I just covered a Mississippi Studies class where we didn't have enough time in the class to even get to the Civil War. We didn't even get to the Civil War. Much less get to any of the race issues that were going on before that.
Thirty.
How do I handle, I mean, it's uncomfortable, but it's necessary for that relative. So how do we as educators do a better job at that, I guess?
Yes, sir.
You show compassion by your knowledge in teaching that class. And you were saying that as a white lady, talking about the experiences that your mother, her grandmother told you, and you related them to the students in the classroom. And you were wondering, how could you more or less get a hold, talk about the black side of this? Maybe in a way, I don't know if you'd only teach a, so, history teacher at that school or not, but maybe it's a good idea. If you talk with your superintendent of education and brought a black, you're a white lady, brought a black male in, and you combine your efforts, and you guys get together, when it comes down to teaching that subject about black history or slavery. And therefore, it might be thorough and able to reach the students, both of you working together as a team. Comparing your ideas, your wisdom, your knowledge, what you've read, what you've been told, what you've taught, what you have experienced. So I would suggest to you, get together with your superintendent and ask by hiring a black male history teacher.
I wanna answer that question, cause I, I feel some type of pain. Mr. Chambers was absolutely right, um, a male history teacher, but we need teachers that look like us. And, and they don't necessarily have to be male. We need black teachers to help with black students. Uh, Mr. Chambers said, um, special ed is considered a cop-out, and sometimes it is. However, we have teachers that don't wanna put in time with the kids that are troubled, that are mainly black, and that are troubled. So they need that, that, that tough love coming from me, I would say, coming from me. Because if Johnny is out of hand, I'm gonna wait till all the kids leave and I'm gonna tell him, "Sit down." Now, you know you don't act like this. If you, if something you don't understand, talk to me. And Johnny will loosen up, but versus coming from you, he's automatically on the defense. Because he feels as if you don't care about him, you just hear because you're getting paid to do it, and you're gonna fuss at him and write him up. And that's not the case all the time. They just need to be understood, they need to be talked to, and they need to be loved on. And you're doing a great job, but we need black teachers in the school system, and that's just the point of it all. It's no if and or buts around it. We need black teachers in the school system.
Danielle, can I ask a clarifying question? Why, why is it so important for a black student to see a black teacher?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
As a role model. Now, they have, uh, I'm gonna use this as an example, and correct me if I'm wrong. They have very few black teachers over at Stone High. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Stone Middle.
Stone, Stone Mill or Stone High, whatever. It's still, what, a lack of black teachers. Now, you dealing with a student whose beliefs, whose ideas, his way of thinking has to be molded. That white teacher can talk all she want to to him. But she's not gonna reach his inner side unless he dealing with a black teacher. He have to have an example there in front of him. You can say what you want to, but as a role model, you don't have, right now, I had a student told me, say, "My momma not gonna believe you, she gonna believe me." He pretended like he was crying when I was administrating over there. He put his head on his desk. He was crying, "Momma." Special ed. He looked up at me, and she would start taking a side. He looked up at me and winked his eye. That happened. Parents are responsible for some of it. Parents are responsible for a whole lot of it. We have this thing about, you can't discipline your, your child. If you, if you cannot discipline your child, don't leave it up to the teacher. The child should be a dis, disciplined example when he walk in that class. He should know right from wrong. He should have learned that from home. Right now, parents expect teachers to do too much. You're putting an awful load on teachers. Maybe, you might not like what I'm saying. But you expect teachers to do too much. You said twenty-six years. That's a blessing. I'm gonna say to them, be quiet. From what I heard the other day, you might be leaving sooner than you planned. Because they planning to take two thousand dollars from your salary to reduce your salary, when they should be giving you five or six more thousand dollars. So those teachers who are eligible to retire, they getting ready to leave. If they have their, their time in, and Mississippi's already suffering from a shortage of teachers. Where are they? They were educated here, but they left the state of Mississippi. They went to Louisiana, Georgia, Florida, California, and Texas. That's where they are. Especially the black ones. My friends who graduated from me more or less, what, they're talking about how much money they make. And they have less stress where they are. They were trying to get me to come. So you make a good one. Teachers are fewer number, they're getting even fewer. You need good teachers who have character, quality, knowledge, comparison, love, and to talk about religion. All of us should be combined and coming from that teaching the classroom because she have, it's either for twenty-eight students to adjust to one person than it is for that one teacher to adjust to twenty-eight students. But you have to start right. When you go in a classroom for the first time, don't crack a smile. Let them know you about business.
Thirty, Mr. Chambers.
Bless you.
Tyler, I'm gonna try my best to kind of follow up with Mr. Chambers. I'm not a parent, but I'm gonna do my best. Um, the reason why they should have more black teachers, of course, it is the role model, and also it's that mother or that fatherly figure while they're at school. And I've stated earlier, if Johnny is out of hand, I can put Johnny back in place by either looking at him, asking him to step out in the hall, or threatening by calling his parents. Versus you, you tell Johnny to step out in the hall, well, he's gonna rebuttal. You don't tell me what to do? You can't tell me what to do? He, he's expecting to get rolled up because white teachers write him up instead of just trying to take the time and understand and talk to him. And it's a lot of kids that are, that are troubled. They come to school with more on their minds than some of the adults. But writing them up and putting them in special ed is not the answer. When they see someone that looks like them, they can relate. And when I say they can relate, they can tell them what's going on at home. They can tell them if, if they're having problems in another classroom. So it's just important that, that black people are in the school system. I'm just gonna say it like that. It's not just one or two.
It's cultural.
We need some more.
It's cultural. It's just, you said, you learned how to cook chitlins. It's cultural.
It's cultural. It's just a cultural thing. You grow up seeing someone that you can identify with. And there was a problem, I'm sure Mr. Chambers could see as principal, that another teacher didn't identify, but he saw it. And he could identify with it because he had already been there. And, and that's one of the things that make these conversations so great, is because we can deal with race and ethnicity, the differences between black and white, but also the similarities. Because, hey, look, I don't understand what it's like to be a white guy. I've always been able to jump. I've always been able to play basketball.
Come on, man.
I, I mean, well, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm making, I'm making light of it, but I'm dealing with some of these stereotypes that are out there. I was nevertheless got to get picked for, for kickball or anything like that. So, I don't understand, i- if you understand what's, I don't, I don't have to deal with any of that. Robbie, but, but it was awkward when, here I am, walking in, and they're saying, "You're trying out for the debate team?" I said, "Yes. Why? I like to argue." So, it was a way for me to productively use something that I like to do, but, but it's...
Forty-five.
I'm done. In all seriousness, it's just cultural. It's a way of I, us being able to identify with parts of the, of the whole. Teachers and administrators can cause their own problems. Listen for me to say, if you don't mind.
One minute, Mr. Chambers.
Especially at the high school. When I got ready to, to obtain a student out of a classroom, and teachers and administrators make this hour. Come here, boy. You've had it. When I got ready to call a student out of the classroom, Ms. Galloway, can I see you for a moment, please? Mr. Anderson, step out in the hallway with me for a minute, please. When I get him out there, I'll walk him to the office and go upside up and come back down another side. But you never embarrass him in front of his peers, because you going to cause problems from here on out. If you learn to respect that kid, I had a good tenure, because I gave all of my students respect, regardless of how bad they've been fighting, some had blood come out of the seat. Man, let me see you for a minute.
Forty-five, Mr. Chambers.
Teachers and administrators sometime can be the cause of their own problems. It depends on how you approach that child. Sometime you have to study that child, know something about his demeanor, his behavior. And when you know that, if you deal with seven of the kids, you've been with them for six months, you should know them.
Does anyone else want to comment before we... Yes, ma'am, move on.
I, I'm not an educator, but I'm, I'm a news reporter, and I've been an education staff reporter for several years. And I would just like to say thank you for, you know, explaining to us, you know, why it's important for your children to have black teachers. But as somebody who will have a white child in, in a school system, I also think it's important for our white children to have representation. If it were, and, yes, be, you know, be patient with me, because I'm not used to speaking. But if it were up to black people alone, racism would have never started. Racism would be over. It's on us, because we're a part of a system that rewards being white, to address that. My daughter being treated by a black doctor is a good thing. My white daughter being taught by a black teacher is a good thing, because you know what? She's going to see that black person in an educated position, in a positive light, as a mentor, and that's going to shape the way she sees the world and the people in it for the rest of her life. That's a good thing. So, it's not just about, well, we should have our own kids teaching our own kids. Racism hurts everybody, you know? The more we tolerate it on a systemic level, we just let it perpetuate, you know? Coming to things like this is good, and it's going to be good for all of us. But as a, as a system, what perpetuates it is that we let, we do the same things, and so we get the same results, so.
Anyone else want to say anything?
You should speak more often.
Yes, you should. I invited the superintendent of education.
Hold on a second. Come, come on to the mic. Well, you did, so now you got to say it in the mic.
As, I mean, my son is...
Let me answer that question again. I did invite the superintendent.
Hang on, hang on, because people online didn't hear the question.
Okay, my question was, did you invite the principals, administrators, and teachers of this community?
I invited the superintendent of board, of the Board of Education.
Okay.
Personally.
As a parent of a biracial child, my son's father is African-American. We've lived here forever. He was raised in this district, went to all these schools, experienced racism. I won't say that he didn't, but now he gave him some heck too. So, I won't completely blame it all on racism. I won't, because he was, he was a hard one. But I will say that him having an African-American teacher in the seventh grade, who changed his life, he still worships her. Miss Jacqueline Moore, he thinks the world of her. He thinks, you know, she taught him a lot of things. But I want to say, as a community member, as a public health educator who's worked in the public health field here for 11 years, I do a lot with these schools. I work with 14 schools in the area that I cover. I think it's really sad that we have one school teacher here who is now leaving our district to teach somewhere else. There should be, this, this sanctuary should have been full of educators. That's where it's going to start, because a lot of it's not going to start at home. Yes, I've taught Christian that you don't see color, that you love everybody, you treat others with kindness, doesn't mean he always does. But everybody doesn't, it doesn't, it's not going to always start at home. It's going to start at, I mean, at the school with some of this. So, I really encourage educators to please attend the next meeting. I think it's important that they hear this conversation, but that they're also part of the conversation. That's all I want to say.
They were given the opportunity.
Yeah, this, um, this is what's uncomfortable about this to me. Again, it seems like everyone in this room is thinking the same thing. We need more black teachers in the middle school and the high school. There's a reason why it's that way. And so, you know, there, there is a way to make a difference. And the, and, and the way to make a difference is to convince those who think otherwise. And so, we need to have, we need to have these discussions in the presence of people who think differently. And I feel like I know what a school board member would say. There's a school board meeting every month. The one that, the special call meeting this week, from what I hear, I, I didn't, my wife went. But from what I hear, it was packed out, because people were interested in what was going on. And I, I think the only way that we're going to make a difference is to go to those school board meetings and, and to, and to, you know, interject our, our feelings, and there's a reason why things are this way. So, they, there's, there's a reason why they have public comment. I'm, I'm guessing, I'm guessing, there's a reason why they have public comment at those meetings.
Can I ask faster a question?
Then it's going to be shower, because we just took her time.
Is there a reason for it to be that way? What is the reason?
I don't know. The, his question was, I said, I said, "There's a reason it is that way." And he asked me what that reason was, and I don't know, because I didn't even know that was a problem before the last meeting we had. So, I mean, I don't know. But, you know, I know some people on the school board, and I think that's a question I'd like to ask them.
I love the statement, just rather than stop talking, I was just getting stiff from sitting. Good evening, my name is Shira Galloway, and in 2008, I graduated from the University of Mississippi, and I began teaching here, fifth grade at Stone Elementary School. One of the, at the time, two African-American teachers at this school. Going back and forth in my mind, like, I don't want to share the story or not, but I'm here. So, here we go. First day of teaching, I was so excited, because it was my first-year fifth-grade reading teacher. I'm teaching every fifth grader. My first-period class, there was a little boy, Caucasian male, red hair. Didn't say much, but I didn't take it personal. I'm still all bubbly with all my energy. So, end of the day, my administrator comes to me, and his words were, "How'd it go today?" And I'm like, "Oh, my God, it was great, I had a great day, yada, yada." And he's like, "Yep, I'm already getting calls about you." And I'm like, "Oh, my God, what did I do?" Because I was, I was kind of a mean teacher, but I was, I was cool, I think. And so, I'm like, "Well, what did I do?" And he said, "Yeah, one of the dads, he saw you at, at pickup, and he said, "I don't want my son in that black teacher's class." He said, "But I, I told him, you know, you don't have a choice, because you teach, "you're the only fifth-grade reading teacher." And I was like, I've only shared this, my dad is here. My dad probably never heard this story, because I think I only shared it with my mom. At that moment, I was like, part of me was like, "Are you, are we really having this conversation right now? Like, did, did you really just come to me?" Because it totally ruined my first-day experience as a teacher, and I never talked to him about it. And, and because I was just like, "I'm done." I didn't, I was not happy here. I promised myself in undergrad that I would give two years to my community, and which I did as a teacher, as a way of giving back. And after those two years were up, were up, I totally left Stone County. I think the big question, people are asking like, "Well, why?" You know, we need more black teachers in our school district. We don't have enough black teachers, or we don't have any, hardly any in some cases. I think the most important question is, why don't we have more black teachers? Because there are numerous black teachers that are qualified within a 60-mile radius who wouldn't mind commuting. I personally know black teachers who have applied. Where their applications go, I'm not sure. What we do here in Stone County very well is taking care of people who are from here. And so, I know we have a new black administrator at the elementary school. I'm very happy about that. I'm very proud of her for that. But at the same time, I know that the black administrators who have come in from the outsides of Stone County were few in number, one to date that I know for sure. I know that there are others who are more qualified, who are not, who are overlooked, because they, I guess just because they don't fit the quote-unquote "job description" to the fullest. So, I think that it's very important, especially right now, in this, um, this, this climate, for everyone, parents, online parents here, to really be proactive. Thank you, Danielle. To really be proactive going forward in our students, black and white, in their education. Because it's very important that the white kids know that black teachers are a thing, and that black kids know that black teachers are a thing, and that they too can become black educators if they so choose. So, I think the most important questions need to be asked at the school board meetings, which we can come to, and you can get on the agenda. Kind of want to check with them before that and get that processed, because I don't speak on behalf of the school district. But, um...
Fifteen.
But, um, yeah, that's my, that's my three minutes. Thank you, Danielle.
No problem. Anyone else? Yes, sir, could you come to the front, please? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to overlook you.
You didn't see me down here, that's what...
Yeah, you have to, yeah. Lower the mic stand a little bit.
I told him not to say it.
Supposed to be showing love, Robbie. My name's Doug Davis. I'm a retired veteran and a registered nurse at Memorial Hospital in Gulfport. And for you two gentlemen, I love you all so much for, you know, standing through your principles and everything. And kind of in a way, I can, I can understand having to deal with racism. For me, as a male nurse working in a predominantly female field, you know, I have to deal with a lot of that. And I'll be honest with you, I've had quite a few elderly black patients. As soon as I walk into their room, and I let them know that I'm their nurse, first thing I see in their eyes is fear, because there's a white man that's supposed to be taking care of them, and they don't know what's going to happen to them. So, I always hit that with the same, the same tempo. First thing I do, come in, I hold their hand. I let them know I love them. I let the love of Christ come through me to them. Because, you know, all these little problems and everything, they go away when his love shines through. You know? I pray for them. And then in the morning, when I'm leaving, they're like, "Man, do you really have to go?" I was like, "Yeah, I kind of need to go home, get some sleep," you know? But, um, I've had to deal with that, you know, the past couple of years, you know, the, being looked down on because I'm a minority in this field, you know? And anytime, you know, anytime you have to go through that, you know, it does, it kind of, uh, kind of leaves its mark on you, you know? And I've noticed that in a lot of careers here lately, medical field, teachers, pastors even, and especially with police officers and law enforcement, we see so much bad in the world, and no matter how much we struggle against that, no matter how much we try to show the love of Christ, it just feels like things aren't getting better. And then we start, we start getting jaded, you know? We start to feel like giving up, kind of. But that's, those are the moments that Christ pushes us into trials for endurance, and we've got to keep moving forward and everything. And I just, again, I wanted to thank you gentlemen so much for coming up here and talking with each of us tonight.
Anyone else before the finale? So, I, I said at the end of this, we will talk about ways, develop a plan that we can move forward as a community, as a, as a group of people. And these are just some ideas that Heather and I, Lauren and I, came up with together. And feel free to, to throw ideas out there to me, when I just, I won't say to me, to everybody. Let your ideas be known, because whatever we can do to be better together, that's what we need to do. So, just a few ideas are, uh, community centers. You know, how can we get a Boys and Girls Club? Community, community committee that deals with both adults and youth. Organized community events. We don't always have to get together when there's a problem. Let's just get together for fun. The goal of our elected officials in moving forward. I mean, it was really important that someone was here, but since they're not, we still must have a goal in mind in moving forward. Like I said at the last meeting, we've been stuck in this place for so long, and now it's, it's become a thing of the past. So, anyways, moving forward, we talked a lot about education. It's really important that the school system try in some shape, form, or fashion to get more involved in the community. I don't know what that will look like. I don't know what that would be. But if we can think of ways or ideas, if that can be done, let's, let's get together. Let's talk about it. And again, don't let this night be the last meeting. Ms. Diane asks, "How can we, you know, make it better?" Invite me to your house, I like to eat. And I'm not picky. So, we, and another thing, we're in the church. Let's set aside a Sunday where we fellowship with each other. Sunday is the most segregated day of the week, but it doesn't have to be this way. We can make a difference. We can be that difference. And I don't know which pastor said it, or panel member said that Stone County would be the change, would be the difference. We will be, if we want to be. It's, it's not going to always be good, y'all, and everybody is not going to always agree with us. And everybody is not going to always show up, as you can see. However, if you're for real about this, if you really want change, and if you're about change, you won't let anybody stop you. And I think I told y'all, well, I'm sure I told y'all, at the last meeting, nobody's going to stop me. I can't be stopped. And, and I'm not speaking for y'all. I'm just speaking for me, because I want better. And not to, you know, to be all this holier-than-thou, but I'm that dream that Dr. King had, when he said he dreamed that we will not be judged by the color of our skin, but by the content of our character. I'm that dream. And so, I'm going to live out his dream, with you or without you. And so, what we got to do, we got to get this right, because we only got one shot. We've, we've missed all the time. Now, the ball is in our court, 30 seconds left in the fourth quarter. If we miss this shot, we're doomed. So, let's not be doomed. It's, it's enough hate going on to keep us... I got this. I got this. It's enough hate to keep us divided. We've been divided for so very long. And just for that, I'm going to talk another minute. Another one. But we've, we've been divided for so long, and, and let's not, uh, let this be our last time, is what I'm saying. I am, if y'all want to talk, any questions you have to ask, like Brother Robbie said, ask your... I am, if y'all wanna talk, any questions you have to ask, like Brother Robbie said, ask your black friends questions that you're concerned about. Ask us. But it's a way to ask us. We, we may be on the defense, but if you come to us with love, we're gonna sit down, we're gonna hold your hand, like my grandma used to say, "Baby, let me tell you." So we will tell you. And that's all I have to say. I wanna thank y'all for tonight. They were invited. For the record, they, everyone was invited. Okay, everyone was invited, yes, sir.
What Danielle said, um, about talk to your white friends, talk to your black friends, um, just to let you know, she and I do that. Uh, in fact, when I interviewed her last Friday, after we turned the camera off, I said, "Okay, Danielle, let me tell you what some of my white friends are saying." And, uh, and I talked to her about that, you know? And, and she straightened some, some things out for me. And, um, I, I think I've straightened some things out for her as well, from time to time. So, um, it really does work. It really does. Thanks, Danielle. Thank you. We have one pastor here who always manages to, uh, stay in the background. And I'm gonna ask my brother, uh, from Wiggins Church of God and Christ, John Howell, if, uh, you will voice a closing prayer for us. Come on up to the mic. Thank you, brother. Put you on the spot.
But, thank you Pastor Riker, all the panel, thank you, Danielle. And we standing for, that's it? Father God, we thank you for allowing us to come to your house once again. We thank you for the meeting, we thank you for everyone that came, everyone that had the questions, everyone that had answers. And God, we know that from this day forward, we won't decide everything tonight, we won't get to know everything tonight. But we pray that we'll work towards coming together, being who you have called us to be. Come work towards being this community, bringing it together, bringing this state together, this coun- country together. Lord, and, and, and everything we do, let it be done in your glory. And as we leave this place, it never your presence, as you keep us, protect us, watch over us. And let us have the love of Christ in us for everyone, in your son Jesus' name. Amen.